Okay, we are back. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We are reconvening our session, our open session, and I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out items that are actions taken in closed session.
The board took two separate actions in closed session this evening. On a seven to zero vote, the board conditionally approved a general leave for 2.33 hours per week to a classified employee at Saddleback College. And on a seven to zero vote, the board voted to approve the settlement of a claim by a former classified for $28,000 and other consideration. Those were the actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Now, I'd like to ask trustee Witt to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Wright.
We have begun. We have begun our fall semester, and I'm certain we're starting with much vigor, patience, and kindness in the classrooms, laboratories, and in the clinical arena. Let us respect our colleagues and our students and bring out the best in each classroom. May faculty intercede the academic barriers and intervene in the students' non-academic barriers. Now, let us all take a few seconds to pray to your God for all of the students and colleges who have suffered so much from these devastating hurricanes. And thank you, ASG, for taking such a significant role in Texas.
Please follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Witt and trustee Wright. Do we have any requests for public comments? Okay. Please come forward. If you wouldn't mind, since I don't have your card, to state who you are, and please try to keep it to two minutes.
Certainly. Good evening. My name's Elaine Lister. I'm the Community Development Director with the City of Mission Viejo, and I'm here representing the city this evening. And I would like to support, to state the city's support for agenda item, I believe it's 6.19, the Innovation and Entrepreneurial Center. The city sees this as being very important for workforce and economic development within the city, and we're highly supportive. We also hope and would like to, we would like to think it would be the future home for the Mission Viejo Chamber of Commerce. And then we would also like to assist, and in any way we can, to help facilitate and expedite the permitting process. And then we would also like to explore offering assistance with our fiber network, if that will help. So again, we're here to support the center. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to board reports, and I will start to my right and with trustee Prendergast.
All right, so I have a couple of things real quick. One, just to my fellow trustees, we had the presentation on guided pathways last board meeting, and we just so happened to get a magazine in the mail this last week on our role in that process. So if you haven't read it, I highly recommend it as good reading. I attended the City of Tustin 90th Celebration yesterday, and the unveiling of a bust for Columbus Tustin, the founder of Tustin. And then it reminded me, Tustin also has another, pardon, history that we just dealt with, and then the 125-year anniversary coming up in a couple of weeks with the Pledge of Allegiance. So as a history teacher, I thought I'd give you a little education here. So on Columbus Day, we marked the 125th anniversary of when the pledge was first universally stated by schoolchildren to commemorate the unofficial, the soft opening of the Chicago World's Fair. And it was done as a sign of patriotism. There are some interesting notes about the original pledge. It did not have "to the United States" in it. It did not have "under God" in it. And at the point where you say "to my flag," people were supposed to raise their right hand toward the flag. And for some reason, in 1935, '36, we stopped doing that and putting our hand over our heart. And so, and then the "under God" was added by Tustin resident and congressman James B. Utte as a, at the urging of Dwight Eisenhower to be added in. And so, just thought it was a nice opportunity to bring in that history because of what I attended on Sunday. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, trustee Jay.
I attended two special board meetings, August 31st, to approve the appointment of Dr. Gregory Anderson, the Saddleback College president, and the September 11th meeting, which was to adopt the budget for the fiscal year 2017 and '18. And thank you, Dr. Fitzsimmons, for having those special meetings. It was very, very helpful. August 26th was a Saturday, and I attended the 50th Anniversary Gala for Moore Park College at the Ronald Reagan Library in Simi Valley under Air Force Number One. I got many ideas for our 50th anniversary, which I really want to work on the committee to, when we have our gala, the 50th, for the 50th anniversary. I really appreciate our yearly galas, because Moore Park College only had a gala for the 25th, their 25th year anniversary and the 50th year anniversary. On September 19th, just a week ago, I visited Sheridan College in Northern Wyoming Community College District. That was very, very interesting. Sheridan College has 2,000-plus students, 450 of students live on campus, and 18 residence halls. The residence halls were new and looked like smaller apartment buildings. They were beautiful. The college has 62 academic programs, and the class size is about 14, averages 14 students in the class. The college is really beautiful. It's the base of the Big Horn, sits at the base of the Big Horn Mountains. I started at the Edward A. Whitney Academic Center. It was a beautiful new building and very impressive. I talked, I talked to and was shown around the campus by Carol Clark. She, her card says "Director of First Impressions." I was wondering if we had a Director of First Impressions. The most impressive thing to me was a tall mural of Edward A. Whitney. He was a rancher, I think a rancher. It showed a picture of him looking up through the valley and up at the Big Horn Mountains. And on the mural, it said, "My estate does not belong to me. I'm only its steward. It belongs to the people, and I dare not be careless with it." He's the one that dedicated two or three buildings there, and I was very impressed with this. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, trustee Jay. And the roads are pretty good in Wyoming, right?
Yes. And I brought, if anybody's interested, a pamphlet here that I picked up, that I picked up at the, the college, Sheridan College. It was so interesting to see something so different than ours.
Thank you. Okay, so my report, we have someone here from the City of Mission Viejo. Last month, we were fortunate to do a presentation on the stadium, the athletic stadium we're going to be building here over the next couple of years. So I thought that presentation went really well and had a lot of good feedback from the city council and, and members of the community regarding that presentation. I did attend an elected officials forum hosted by Congresswoman Mimi Walters. She provided us her perspective on what she saw was happening in Washington, D.C. We, I also attended, I think with trustee Milchiker, an Orange County Business Council briefing with, I guess he's somewhat well-known political prognosticator commentator Hugh Hewitt. I'm sure he's a good guy. His briefing was less than insightful, to be honest with you, but, you know, it, he lives in Irvine, I believe, four months of the year. Wasn't one of his more insightful sessions. And then we had a special board of trustees meeting to review the budget. I want to thank the team, the administration, the chancellor, and everyone else who's involved in, Kim McCord, or is Kim here? And others who were involved in helping put that together. That was really helpful, I think, for all of our, for all of our board members. And then finally, I don't think it can escape the podium here, that the issue of DACA, we have issued a public statement on behalf of the district. I, we had the chancellor and two college presidents sign it. I signed it as board president. You know, it invokes a lot of motions. We've received some negative comments regarding the statement, some positive comments. But I think the issue is that, for us as a district, we support our students, and I think that that's what the statement really emphasizes, that we have students here, they're contributing to our college, they're getting educated, and that's our role as an institution to support the students that are here. So thank you very much. Trustee Wright.
I attended a number of meetings this last reporting period. I attended both of those board meetings that we had, special board meetings, the one to select the new president for Saddleback College, and the other one, the, on the 11th of September, where we went over the budget. And the presentation was wonderful, excellent, to really take some time and spend a couple hours going through the budget and seeing where, where the money came from and then how it was being used. So it was very well done. I also was privileged again to be asked to lead the Pledge of Allegiance and attend the 9th Annual South County Veterans Resource Fair here at Saddleback College. It was a great event. They had a number of, I think they had close to around 60 vendors there, and it was just a wonderful activity, this veterans' fair. I also attended the football game on Saturday night between Saddleback College and El Camino. At halftime, the score was 41 to 35, with Saddleback being up by six points, at 76 points in the opening first half. So it was a exciting game.
Not a defensive battle.
Not a defensive battle. Five, Saddleback College, I think they had five touchdown passes the first, first half. Finally, the, in the second half, there was a touchdown made by El Camino, so they moved ahead, and when they had also a field goal. So it was 45 to 41, but Saddleback came back in the last minute and a half and scored a touchdown, and they won 48 to 45. So it was, it was a pretty exciting game to see all those points scored. The other thing is, before I close, I just wanted to applaud a couple of people. I want to applaud Glenn Rockmore for going on a Navy vessel and being there for a day and being, watching the Navy. He told me that he had a wonderful experience doing that. And then also, I want to applaud the district for some, for a marketing, in the Orange County Business Journal, they put some marketing out seeking education in businesses, our business partners. So it was very well done. And then finally, I want to applaud Saddleback College again for having a ceremony for the 9/11 out in front of the Veterans Memorial, where they had a moment of silence and, and Dana put that together. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Trustee Lang.
Thank you. Yes, try and be fairly brief, echoing some of the remarks that were made by trustee Witt in her invocation. I just want to extend my sympathies to those folks that have been, you know, recently affected by all of the storms in Texas and in Florida, as well as the earthquake in Mexico City, and all of the extensive damage that occurred there, Caribbean Islands, Puerto Rico, et cetera. I know in my family, we were worried about, my mother resides in Sarasota, Florida, and it was tense there for, for quite a while. So, you know, again, hope, hope for a very speedy recovery for all of the folks and all of the damage that was done in those areas. In addition, yeah, lost my train of thought, so I'll end my remarks there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We've all been there. Trustee Milchiker.
I'll take trustee Lang's time, okay? The Orange, the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force met last week, and we discussed priorities for the upcoming year. North Orange County is going to be in, in charge of it this year. We discussed DACA, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, the California College Promise Program, and enhancing outreach with businesses and other professional organizations. So if anyone has other ideas for the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force to delve into this year, or to explore this year, and to advocate for this year, please let me know. Also, I went to the Black Chamber of Commerce meeting. Irvine Valley College had purchased a table and invited us to attend, and it was very interesting, and it was even more interesting, because one of our veterans from Saddleback College won, one of the big scholarships of the evening. So that was a wonderful thing. Also, there was a memorial service for a beloved librarian at Saddleback College, Anne Hagerty, and she was a librarian here for 27 years. She started, went back to school when her oldest daughter went, started college, and she became a librarian, got her PhD in library science, and left many donations for Saddleback College and scholarships for Saddleback College. And she was actually honored in, in 2007 by U.S. Congressman Gary Miller, the 47th Congressional District, Senator Don, Dick Ackerman, the 33rd, the 33rd Senate District, Assemblyman Todd Spitzer, the 71st Republican, the 71st Assembly District, excuse me, and Supervisor Tom Wilson, the 5th District. So she had many accolades, many honors, and we will miss her. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
My attendance to anything this past month or last month was not well-attended, because I have really been working on getting better. And then, as I'm getting better, I end up with this head cold. So I'm sure some of you know what I'm talking about. But I, I did attend the budget meeting that we had, the special meeting, and I have to say, and, and just dovetail what was already said, thank you to those of you who presented. It was a lot of work and a wealth of information. It really opened my eyes to more than I ever thought. Having been here a long time, you think you know it, but let me tell you, you don't. And I see in the audience, too, I just wanted to welcome Dana de Beaumont. She was our right hand when President Jamal and I went to Washington several, several months ago. Maybe that's where I got sick, but at any rate, I really am happy to see you in the audience and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I'm going to take one moment of personal privilege before I turn over to student trustee. I forgot to mention, I wish Coach Mack was here. So I had a gentleman's wager with the, the board president of Long Beach City College, Jeff Kellogg, on the game between Saddleback and, and Long Beach. He lost the bet, thankfully, but he did honor his bet, and he wore a Saddleback College t-shirt at their recent public board meeting, and I have evidence of that. So I commend him for keeping his word and glad that he lost. So, student trustee Larson.
No report.
All right. Chancellor's report.
Okay, so this evening, we have a couple of presentations that are going to be really interesting. The first one is a legislative advocacy overview, which includes Terry Fugeman, Mark McDonald, and Dana de Beaumont, who are going to present legislative advocacy efforts on behalf of the district and college. So welcome. Thanks for being here for that. And then we also have a team of people from Saddleback College, I see five or six people now, so I'm not sure exactly, but it's regarding a very complicated project that has been discussed and been researched and planned for several months now. And it's the Saddleback College Proposal for an Innovation and Entrepreneurship Center. So we're going to hear about that as well. So I want to thank you all for being here this evening. I also wanted to give an update on another complicated project that took us about 18 months to get underway, and that was the KSBR, KSUN program and collaboration effort. And as you might recall, in June, the board approved a collaboration agreement between our district and California State University, Northridge. And we have now been implementing under that agreement, and the soft landing of both stations. Signal interference started two weeks ago, and it's working well with some minor issues being addressed by KSBR. The hard landing will start October 1st, so that's coming up next week, as all the issues are, are being resolved. Both stations have been receiving wide publicity. I don't know if you've seen a lot of publicity, not just the Orange County Register and LA and across the nation, because it's one of the largest public radio collaborations in the nation at this point. So this has been a huge thing, and got, getting a lot of attention. In the next two to three months, the media campaign for KSBR and KSUN programming will roll out, and the new AAA format will roll out with an advertising budget of $500,000. Sheryl Crow will perform a concert on October 23rd to promote the collaboration at the Fonda Theater in Hollywood, near the Hollywood Bowl. So that's like a kickoff of the entire collaboration, and it's a fundraising effort for both parties. The new 88.5 website, www.885fm.org, is up and running now with more changes and additions to come. And the Radio Oversight Committee, if you recall the presentation that was done in June, it's called the ROC, R-O-C, meets on a monthly basis. And basically, they're, they're the ones that are really rolling through the implementation things. And they're reviewing the budget, the marketing campaign, the hiring, the website, and just the overall support of the collaboration with the co-general managers of KSBR and KSUN. And you'll see that Jim Rondo, who's the co-general manager for KSBR, may be spending more time at KSUN's site, because they'll be hiring some additional staff and addressing the technical issues, and just sharing the overall responsibility for the collaboration agreement. So it's, it's rolling off very nicely. So I thought I'd give you that update. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Now we're into the college presidents' reports. Denny Whitaker, from Saddleback College.
Thank you. I was looking at the agenda, and I thought my colleague was going to go first. Got me. Thank you very much for this opportunity. You have my written report in front of you. This is my last meeting as your interim president, technically speaking, and I may be here a few days beyond that to assist in some, some transitioning and, in some other ways, but it'll be my last opportunity to sit at this table. And I just want to tell you that in the, in the few months that I have been here, that the institutions, Saddleback, my, working with my colleague next to me at IVC, and you board members, have sucked me in. And it has, it has been a short month, that has, months that has evolved into a lifetime for me. And I thank you very much for the confidence that you have displayed in, in hiring a stranger and, and coming on board. I am optimistic that the, the benefits outweigh the negatives of bringing someone in for a short amount of time, and that the, it can be shown that even in a short amount of time, positive efforts can be made to accomplish changes, to help an institution as they, as they drive through, from one transition to the next. And I, it's a very proud opportunity that I've had, and with great humility, that I say thank you for hiring me, and thank you to the, the people that I have worked closely with that have basically adopted me, and it will, it will always reside as a highlight in my life. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I must confess that I've been one of the, I was one of the people that had some doubts, and the chancellor knows this, not about you, per se, but about, about the process and about the selection of, of an interim versus an acting. And, and I can say, from my perspective, not only did you address many concerns I might have had, but I think you exceeded them, and I think you did a really top-notch job in a short period of time.
You're here.
Here, 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 here.
Okay, IVC.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to echo that. I have very much enjoyed working with Denise. I think we have set some very good things in motion. We have had some great meetings together and dialogued on some things that can really improve how the two colleges work together, and some of those things are starting to happen. So it's been a great time. I really enjoyed that. Thank you. Well, we are wrapping up the AAACC National Guided Pathways Project. We're going to institute number six in October, and there's some talk of extending that somewhat, but maybe not. But that's right on the heels of the AAACC California Guided Pathways. California needed to have its own process, because we're so much different than the other states around the country. The first institute was held in Irvine, and I had the opportunity to attend that last week. And then finally, what I like to call Chancellor Oakley's $150 million guided pathways project is kicking off, and it's going to be led by the IEPI, which is the Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Initiative. And it's a mandatory meeting. If you want to be part of the $150 million, you have to attend, and it will be held, again, in Irvine. And I think it's next Thursday, as I understand. So it's coming up pretty, pretty quickly here. So it's, it's the day of the guided pathways. And so there's a lot of work going on there. The colleges are collaborating on that, and I think it's one of our, our initiatives to, to work together on that. So that's what's keeping us busy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to our ASG reports. Who's going to start?
Good evening. At the beginning of the month, Saddleback College's ASG held our first monthly pancake breakfast, in which we raised $445 for Houston Community College and $245 for the emergency fund. And so, from that, we're, we're also looking for other ways to fundraise to support Houston Community Colleges, college and the students over there. In regards to DACA, I want to say thank you to President Jamal and Chancellor Fitzsimmons for writing a statement in support of DACA students. ASG II has written a statement in support of those students, and we are looking for ways to share that with the student body. Next month, for the month of October, we are declaring it our Mental Health Awareness Month, in which we will be having presentations and workshops, probably about 15 to 20, a different one each day, for students to attend, to learn about mental health and bring about awareness and advocacy to the subject. I also had the pleasure of attending the Black Chamber of Commerce and Veterans Recognition Event at the OC Fair, and it was really great to get to celebrate our student veteran who received one of the scholarships that evening. This Saturday at Saddleback, we have the Foster Youth College and Career Fair, so ASG will be volunteering and supporting that fair. And lastly, this week, tomorrow through Thursday, we have a blood drive, and we are collaborating with the American Red Cross on that. So if you'd like to donate blood, we'll be in the SSC Building from 9 to 6 each day. Thank you.
Thank you. ASG, IVC.
All righty. Hello and good evening. ASG of IVC would also like to make a statement regards to DACA. I would also like to take this moment to thank President Jamal, interim chancellor Fitzsimmons, and Dr. Lyndon Fontenella for their public statement regarding DACA. There is an uncertainty among students and faculty about DACA itself and how it affects them. This uncertainty can pose a problem for our students on campus. ASG of IVC is in the process of creating a statement resolution concerning DACA. ASG of IVC and the Student Equity Program also hosted an open forum to give students an opportunity to discuss their feelings regarding DACA. There was a variety of opinions shared, and the forum was done in a respectful manner. I believe IVC students left the forum feeling like they had an opportunity to share their voices. Also, ASG of IVC, Inter Club Council, IVC Foundation, IVC IT, participated, organized a loose change fundraising drive. The fundraiser lasted for two days on September 13th and September 14th. Members of student government walked around campus asking students for loose change in order to raise money for donations for disaster relief in Houston. All of the donations will benefit Houston Community College, and in total, IVC raised over $2,000 for the relief efforts. ASG of IVC has also met with one of our research analysts about creating a guided pathway survey. The purpose of the survey will be to ask students about why they aren't able to transfer in two years and how we could speed up the process. in two years and how we could speed up the process for supporting students in achieving their academic goals. We look forward to hearing about the results of that survey, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you both very much. All right, now we're on to board requests for reports. Do we have any? Not that I see. Okay. We're going to move on now to our discussion items, and I think we're going to kick things off with our legislative advocacy overview, and I'll turn it over to Teri Flugman to kick things off.
Good evening, members of the board and Chancellor Fitzsimmons. I too have a cold, Teri, so bear with me. Hopefully, I won't cough through the entire thing. Thank you for hosting us every year to give you a brief overview of our legislative and advocacy efforts. My name is Teri Flugman. I'm the executive director of Public and Government Affairs for the district. And presenting with me are Mark McDonald from McKellum Group. He's our state advocate. And Dana DeBoma, our federal advocate from Capital Advocacy Partners. So a little bit about how we work together. Each one of us pretty much manage our own relationships, and I act as a central facilitator for the district. Dana is the central facilitator for all things federal, and Mark is a facilitator for all things state. A little bit about what we do. So we pretty much just have three things on this slide, where's a million things that we do, but overall, we promote and advance the district and colleges. And we do this by building important relationships with our stakeholders, so that when we want something or we really want to make progress on something, those relationships are already in place. And we do this by conducting visits at the local, state, and federal level. We also monitor legislation at the state level. There are usually several hundred bills that we go through, and our goal is to really influence the outcome of these bills. So when they start in their committees, they're often very clunky, just kind of an outline of what they're going to end up being, and our goal is to try to make those as good as we can, to either save costs or to provide a better benefit to students. And finally, we take on advocacy projects. You're going to hear a little bit more about those later in the presentation, but at the state level, we do a lot in terms of legislation and policy, and at the federal level, we also include grants advocacy on behalf of the colleges. A couple of highlights from this year. We chaired the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, and that is the four community college districts in Orange County. And on behalf, we can basically advocate on behalf of 300,000 students instead of just our 60,000 students. So we bring our voices together, try to align on our positions on bills. We also co-hosted a Women in Politics Symposium, and this was a really fantastic opportunity for our students to participate in civic engagement. And we involve them in all aspects of it. They helped us with fundraising, they helped us promote it, and of course, they attended. And it wasn't just women, there were quite a few men there, too. Local advocacy, one of our highlights was, we hosted Representative Mimi Walters at ATAP, and President Jamal and Chancellor Fitzsimmons were there. We had a state advocacy day, and this was led, I have to say, mostly in part to our colleges' veterans' centers. Nancy Montgomery in particular really led this effort. Terrence Nelson played a huge role in it, and we helped with strategy, and also trustee Wright and President Rockmore were there. We had, I think, three or 400 students from around the state, and that was a $10 million win in the budget this year, something we've been working on for about three years. And as far as federal advocacy, we sent people to Washington DC to advocate for several issues associated with veterans' affairs, as well as CTE apprenticeships, Perkins, et cetera. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark for state advocacy.
Great. Thank you, President Jamal, Chancellor Fitzsimmons, board members. My name's Mark McDonald. I'm with the McKellum Group. It's my pleasure to be down here and present our state advocacy for the year. So a couple of things. We're your eyes, ears, and voice in and around the Capitol on a daily basis. We're in the Capitol day-to-day in meetings with legislators and staff. Every session, as Teri noted, there are thousands of bills that are introduced. Right now, there are 700 bills that are awaiting the governor's action at his desk right now, just to give you an idea of the volume of what we go through. There are essentially two state processes that occur at the same time. One is the budget process, although this governor more and more has put policy decisions in the budget because of the majority vote budget now, and I don't see that changing with the next governor coming through. I think that's a trend that's going to continue. And then we also have the legislative process, and at each of one of those orange arrows is an opportunity for us to influence legislation as it moves through the process. And I have to say that due to the, how this district is set up and the organization that we have, the influence is great. With Teri taking the lead, we do a Monday conference call with all the government relations people and our clients, but Teri is really very active. Her contacts with the presidents, the chancellor, and the administrators of the district to get us the information that we need to get back to the committees and the legislatures is fantastic. Couple of things, focus on South Orange County. Number one is the basic aid issue. We actually had a big win this year as far as basic aid is concerned when it comes to the California College Promise, as was mentioned before. There was a move to not include basic aid districts in the reimbursement. What the legislation was is all first-time, full-time students would have their fees waived, and there was a move to not include basic aid districts in getting those fees reimbursed, and we were able to eliminate that. And we took it off the table, actually, which was a tremendous win, because I think this issue's going to come back next year as well. Teri mentioned the Veterans Resource Center funding, and then the facilities. We were focused a lot on getting facilities projects through so that we can get the South Orange County facilities funded. Some major themes for 2017, the first one's already been hit upon. Immigration, DACA was a huge issue. SB 54, the sanctuary state bill, sits at the governor's desk, is likely going to get signed. AB 21 is a companion bill that sets out a best practices for how institutions of higher education need to interact with federal immigration enforcement. And then from the state level, there is money that was allocated in the last days of the legislative session. $7 million of that $30 million goes to community colleges for emergency aid to undocumented students, essentially. Big focus on full-time attendance, guided pathways, as President Rockmore mentioned, was a big focus this year, as you guys have been leading the way on that. The baccalaureate degree program again, and then, of course, always looming retirement costs have been coming up. I'm not going to read all of these, but budget successes, the guided pathways money, guaranteed funding for veterans' resource centers, money for mental health, innovation awards, and then 15 facilities projects. Legislation, big legislation this year. The Community College Promise Program, the bill sits at the governor's desk, but even if he signs it, it still needs to be funded next year, and so this is going to continue to be an issue. And then one thing I want to point out, it's not always the bills that pass that are good, but it's also the bills you're able to stop. AB 387 Thurmond would have had really a chilling effect on our allied health clinical programs, and we were able to stop that bill. Next year's theme, there's already discussion around a new funding formula, rethinking growth, combining categorical programs. The College Promise is going to be another discussion. The baccalaureate degree is going to be another discussion, and then Proposition 51, facilities. The governor's making it very difficult to fund those, so those are going to continue to be an issue. Politics next year. I just want to point out two quick things on that slide. Number one, this is the last year of this governor, and this governor's theory has been to get money down to the locals and let them spend it in the best way that they see possible. This could be the last year where we see that being the case, and we might have a little more micromanagement from some of the candidates that may become governor next year. It is an election year, but the legislature will continue to be dominated by Democrats. Whether or not they keep their two-thirds majority in the two houses will be the issue in the coming year, and there are two hot elections. They're in Orange County, but they're north of here. So with that, I will turn it over to Dana for the federal overview.
Hi, I'm Dana DeBoma from Capital Advocacy Partners in Washington DC. Thank you for having me here, and thank you for the opportunity to serve you and your students. We're actually quite active in Washington DC, and we're really engaged in being your voice with Congress, the agencies, and the administration. We work on a variety of fronts on your behalf. We research programs to see where we might be able to get funding or how influence funding. We understand the requirements and the agency priorities and help your staff and administrators understand that. Importantly, we build longstanding and deep relationships with decision-makers and staff. We position the colleges to win and succeed, and we work on building congressional support and partnerships at the committee level as well with our elected officials. And so, and one thing we really work hard doing is planning ahead, looking to see where our priorities might be in positioning us. We've been involved in the NSF includes implementation, which Saddleback is in the process of applying to and following up on our planning grant, and we're working on apprenticeships, focused on apprenticeships funding, and ATAP as well. We work on legislation to examine, sorry, y'all, to examine, track, and recommend positions. We draft and recommend legislative language this year, and we've been a resource for federal decision-makers. Staff and committee, staff on both the personal offices and the committees often reach out and ask me, you know, what we think or where we are, or how will this impact us? Some focus that we've been on this year specifically is year-round Pell, which has been important to our students, and that's something that's going to continue. Legislative language and advocacy support for students, veterans, healthcare enrollment to ensure that our students, our veteran students are enrolled in healthcare, that they're entitled to before it's a problem. So we've worked and drafted language, and we continue to engage on that. Efforts to direct the NSF to establish an ATE Photonic Center. They're cutting their, they want to cut the number of centers from above 50 to 10, and so we're working to include, to get some language to make sure that a photonic center is included so that we may be able to compete. Advocacy and outreach on apprenticeships, which we estimate about $200 million might be coming down the pipe. They're pulling resources from other programs. Advocacy with California members to serve Dreamers and protect California sanctuary entities from losing funding, and I'm happy to answer more questions on that that you might have. Just touching base on DACA real quickly, that is moving. Congress is going to pass something to protect these students. The question is whether there will be a path to citizenship and the timing of that path. So I really do think DACA is going to happen before the end of the year. It's not something that the president is going to address. And another thing that we do is outreach and consultation on active grants such as Annaphezi and Saddleback's Behavioral Health Workforce Grants to try to troubleshoot or try to make sure program managers are satisfied so that we're in a good position. Looking ahead, the administration. There have been changes, you know, actually at all level, and one thing that's really noticeable is the white, is the agencies have been very slow to staff. I was at dinner earlier, what day is this? Last week, with someone that was an Assistant Secretary of Labor, they had 100 appointed positions at labor. Right now, only to about 25 have been filled. So the agencies have been very slow to staff. They've been focused on a regulatory review, looking to change and reduce requirements. So any requirements that are particularly cumbersome or that we would like to change are something that we should really be working on. And another, other issues have included charter schools, school choice, and expanding apprenticeships. And just today, they unveiled the skeletal of, they want to have a new, like, coding STEM grant program of up to $200 million for underserved populations. Congress, there's a tense relationship between the president and Congress, and the president has been turning to Democrats as partners, which is someone who's been in DC for 20 years. It's fascinating what's going on. The focus on DC will be on higher education reauthorizations and Perkins reauthorizations. Perkins reauthorization is essentially going to be extended for another two years before the end of the month when it expires. DACA, I've touched on apprenticeships, college affordability, completion, and job placement, certificate and credentials, and ladders of opportunity, and institutional accountability and risk sharing is not going away. That's going to be part of the dialogue. Targeting funding opportunities, things we're really looking at is ATAP, health sciences, STEM, and student veterans. And this requires planning and consistent effort, and I really think we've made significant strides in the last several years to really build our reputation and rapport in DC, and I think it's really been impactful. And I'd like to especially thank President Jamal and trustee Witt for coming, and we've had students, we had a dean. It seems like more people are coming, and the folks listen to me all the time, but I can't replace you, so thank you. And then one thing to add at the end, great things are done by a series of small things brought together. Vincent Bongo, so thank you.
Thank you. Give us a second. Yeah, I'm sure there will be questions, and I will, it looks like trustee Milchek.
Yeah, first of all, I thank both of you, both Mark and Dana, and also Teri, for working with us on the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force all year. I think we were, we had a very successful year. As you said, I think the best advocates for us is, when we meet with legislators, are our students. They are, they speak from their heart, and they really make the case much better than any of us speaking about our community colleges. They talk about what the colleges mean to them and what it means for their future, so I think it's very important. Are there any particular issues that you think we should focus on for this coming year? That's my question, okay? And also for Mark, I kind of hate to ask this in open session, but do you have any thoughts about basic aid this year? Thanks.
I think as far as issues are concerned, I think two things that are coming back are the College Promise, the baccalaureate degree. One of the things, the reasons the baccalaureate degree died is because there was supposed to be an LAO report, is LAO is the Legislative Analyst Office, they're the non-partisan budget and policy shop, and they were supposed to do a report on the current program this fall, and nobody wanted to expand the program until that report was released. Well, that report's going to be released this fall, and so there's not really an excuse anymore not to do that. And as far as basic aid is concerned, I think you have issues out there. Certain people think that you're just rich and you don't need, and, but, and there is discussion about a new funding formula, but I think you have a lot of allies that are not basic aid districts as well. And, you know, the argument we made on the College Promise when you're waiving fees for these for these, for students that are first time full-time was, the argument came, oh, well, these are just wealthy, wealthy college students. Why are we raising fees for them? And, you know, these are wealthy districts. But when you look at it, the cost of living in these areas is probably higher, so the students need more support than in other areas, just because of the cost of living. So, you know, we're vigilant on that, but I think it's something to watch. But I don't think there's anything imminent at this point, I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I, did you have more?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Terry. I mean, Dana. My bad.
Well, if you have anything that we should advocate for on the federal arena.
Yes, and I just want to add something about the cost of living here. And I'm sure President Rockmore remembers this. For the Annaphezi grant that IVC got, we did not qualify for it because of our, the number of Pell students and the income of our students. We did not qualify, but we knew from visits and from advocacy that we could apply for a waiver. We got the waiver and won the grant. So that is like a really important thing, that once we show the real data and how our students are really impacted, we can serve them and get them the benefits that they deserve. In terms of DC, it's the higher ed reauthorizations and the Perkins. And I, like I said, I really do think DACA is like a train that's left the station and they're going to take care of the students. It's just a matter of whether it will be citizenship. And there was a new bill released today by some pretty conservative senators that would give, like have a 15-year path to citizenship, but these students do have to be, have entered the United States before 16, and a high school diploma, and college students, or a job, and no criminal background, and have not had any lapse of registration. And under that bill, they would have to reregister every five years for 15 years. And at 15 years, if they've met the requirements, they could get citizenship. And that, something along that line is where I think it's going to happen, maybe not quite 15 years. But there's, there is just not a will in DC to make these students leave as long as they don't have a criminal record. The question is, how are we going to stop? They want to stop the path, many people. I think institutional accountability and risk sharing, I think it's important for us to show how successful we are and how we work with our students. And then, you know, our ladders of opportunity and all the things that we're doing, it's about sharing the message and impacting the change because, you know, we're changemakers here and leaders, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Trustee Prendergast.
All right, this is actually for Dana. Go back. So I think I brought this up probably every time you've been here. Affordable Care Act. We know that as public agencies, there's the concern about having to pay what's called the Cadillac Tax. And I know that's been waived, but it's just been waived. And then also, there's kind of an unknown fee that a lot of people aren't aware of. It technically goes to the insurance companies, a 3.65% fee for research and helping subsidize CoverCalifornia, which again, as a public agency on a limited budget that is supposed to serve students in the classroom, is there a way, I know there's an imminent vote, and we'll have to wait and see what happens when the dust settles. But if perchance it doesn't get repealed and replaced, and they do sit down and talk, are we positioned, are we ready to go for having that be addressed and hopefully changed so that fire, police, us are no longer being expected to pay the insurance, like stopping the insurance companies from passing that fee on to us because we're a public agency, not a, not a business that can just raise more revenue by increasing our prices 3.65%, right?
I, I will take a look at that issue. It's not something that I have been active on or know enough to speak intelligently on it. I do know that we do have the vote next week, and if we have a vote, because Collins came out today saying she was against it, and two other senators already have. And anything that waits past the end of the month would require 60 votes. So I think we've got a little bit of a run left on this. I don't think it's, it's going to be solved next week at all. So I put a note on that, and I'll definitely take, take a look at. There is the issue, you know, of costs, and the federal government is notorious for passing expenses and costs on. So I will take a look and report back on that.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
So I guess this one's for Mark, and just want to come back to basic aid for just a second. Obviously, that's a critically important issue for this district. And, you know, you seem fairly certain of the fact that we wouldn't see any imminent legislation. But my understanding is there is, there has been a change on some of the, you know, subcommittees in terms of having more members that are very much opposed to the existing model. And in terms, you described the fact that they're looking at different kinds of funding models, and I'm just wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit more.
So that's, that's within the chancellor's office right now, and there's, and it's not happening at the legislative level, at the legislator level. What's going on at the chancellor's office is districts right now aren't generally speaking growing. There's been a plateau as far as bringing new students in. And so this chancellor has put together a work group, and they want to look at growth in general, and having community college budgets being driven by the number of students that you serve. The other thing that they want to look at is consolidating the categoricals that focus on student success. So basic skills, student equity, student success and support program. Can we better integrate those so that you, as a district, can focus the dollars on where they're most needed and take down some of the barriers that prevent you from, from best-serving You know, whether basic aid comes up in that discussion or not, I've, I've been told that we don't need to worry at this point, but it's something that I'm continually talking to folks about at the chancellor's office at this point. I think like very few legislators probably know, when you say basic aid, what you're, what you're talking about, you have to explain it to them. Staff are aware, but, but the discussions are at the chancellor's office at this point.
Can I speak to this a minute? We are vulnerable. I've been keeping my ear to the ground and talking to people that are on the work group. I can't say a lot in the public session, but I can tell you that through the formula, we're vulnerable in a couple different ways. One is that when we fold things, when we start to fold things together, such as categoricals, and/or fold things into the base, then that automatically will then take away the individual, even if it's in legislative language, it basically then provides a basis for it to go into our, the base, which then eliminates it for basic aid. So there's a lot of possibilities for that, like they did for PFE a couple of years ago. So we have that vulnerability. There's also a piece in the funding formula that's going to be for outcomes, and how that would affect us is unknown at this point. And we do have more basic aid districts now. We have seven. And the prediction is over the next 20 years, a good majority of the districts in the state would be basic aid, based on how property tax increases are happening across the state and is projected out for the next 20 years. But as you saw, we saw through the K-12s that there was a lot of negative impact when they did their funding formula for the basic aid districts. So we'll be, been monitoring that through multiple methods that isn't, doesn't include necessarily McCollan Group in that, but we have our own basic aid advocacy person, as well as all the folks that are involved in the work group, so.
Thank you, Chancellor. I have two questions. Mark, with respect to AB 19 and the college promise, and where are we really going with this in, in the state? Are we, is it, given the political dynamics in the state, the Democrats clearly, and maybe not in the supermajority, but certainly in the majority for the foreseeable future, likely to win the governor's race unless there's some Titanic fissure in the politics here, which probably is not going to happen? I mean, are we moving towards, you know, community college being free in the state of California?
So I think where we're moving is for it to be free with conditions, I think is what I would say. The way that AB 19 started and the community college promise started was it basically said, if you're a full-time student and it's your first year of community college, then you did not have to pay tuition or fees.
I see some smiles down here. The students.
Where it moved to from that, where it moved to from that was it said, okay, that's nice, but the free community college piece needs to be like the cherry on top of the sundae. The students need to have the wraparound services as well. So what it, what it has morphed into is essentially a separate program that's funded separately. And then the funding is allocated to the districts to waive the fees for those students. But the districts also have to do a certain number of things in order to get that money. And those things include partnerships with your, your local K-12 LEAs, participation in the Guided Pathways Program, and things like that.
Hard stuff for colleges to do.
Things that you're already doing, I would imagine, to create a seamless pathway from high school to college, and then have the fees be kind of the icing on the cake, so to speak, that would be waived. And I will say, the bill is on the governor's desk. It's not funded this year, so I would say it's a coin flip whether he signs it or not. But in the recent budget request from the state chancellor's office, they've requested money to fund it. And I think the governor is starting to come around to this idea a little bit more.
Thank you. And then Dana? So just a question about, we have a new secretary of education who doesn't come from a background of education. I'm just wondering, where do you see her priorities with respect to higher education?
Well, we saw a reversal of a rule last week on sexual assault and how that is handled, which I think took, we knew she was looking at it, but having picked that and moved on that, I think it was, it took, it was a little surprising. She is really focused on a handful of programs. It seems that like school choice and charters are taking more of a backseat just because they didn't pick up the support that they anticipated. She's not out there as much as one would, as much as probably she would like to be because people aren't inviting her to come. And they're, it's a tough thing. She, they are focused on apprenticeships, and I'm assured, I've been assured by people I trust that there's going to be about $200 million for an apprenticeship program, and they want to work with pre-apprenticeship programs in the high schools too, which are kind of like track-type things, the kind of things we're already doing. So I think, it's a really hard ques, she's, she's a bit of a wild card, and not a lot's happening in education right now. The Higher Ed Act is being redone, but it's being redone, it's really being written out of the Senate, out of Lamar Alexander's shop. And Perkins, they'll hold up with that as, I had thought at some point last year it might really go. But what they want to do is reduce the number of programs for grant, for funding for students to, they say to reduce the complexity. So it's something we're really watching. They want to reduce it down to two or three different programs. So those are the kind of things, they want to just give more power locals to the locals. But the problem with some of that is they want to trim funding, and it's tough. It's, it's an interesting time with the secretary of education. And for labor, there's like nothing coming out of the Labor Department, that they just are not staffed. And it's, it's a really unusual time. And I'm told that they're, they're, they're trying to get people in these positions, but they're being turned down often. And I think part of that is that, you know, people, why would you want to leave a secure job when, you know, it seems that there's been a high level of turnover?
Yeah, well, that's the case within any administration. These are short-term assignments.
Yeah.
So that's not unusual. Other things are unusual, but that's not.
Yeah.
All right, well, I want to, I want to thank you and Mark for being here tonight on behalf of the board. Appreciate you coming down from Sacramento and you from DC. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right. I think what we're going to do without objection is to move 6.19 up to a discussion item. And if I could ask those in the room here, I think, I don't know who's going to lead this presentation, to come forward.
Good evening, board members, and everyone else here in the audience and presidents. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce a new initiative that Saddleback College has been working on for some time. You actually heard much of the legislative talk today about the importance of apprenticeship and accountability and placement. And this is really what started the conversation. So I wanted to introduce you to the Saddleback College Innovation Entrepreneurship Center Presenting with me will be Israel Dominguez, who is the Director of Economic Workforce and Development at Saddleback College, and Carol Hilton, who's the Vice President of Instruction. And then we have some faculty members. We'll go, we know Glenn Stevenson, we know Scott Frederickson, and George Eaton, who is a part-time faculty member in computer science. So let me move on, I'm trying to keep within the time. The Innovation Entrepreneurship Center is going to be a partnership, a unique partnership between the City of Mission Viejo and a variety of other partners. It really started with us with a lot of disconnected puzzle pieces. We had a lot of activities that we knew we needed to do. We needed to expand some, some programs to better serve the manufacturers here in the Orange County area. We had students who had programmatic needs, we had businesses who had incubator needs. We had an entrepreneurship center that existed really on paper with some significant activities that occasionally happened, but no physical presence. And so we, we kind of crowded all those things up and started putting some pieces together. And again, with the blank slate, we tried to, to kind of create a basis for the project. So together, we looked at Saddleback College's Economic Workforce and Development Plan, we looked at the labor market information, we pulled from our program reviews and aligned with our college's goals. And in doing that, we were able to lay the first piece of our, our little puzzle that we were trying to solve. We continued for months to hold meetings with the City of Mission Viejo and the Chamber of Commerce and their economic development team, and really decided that a collaboration with Saddleback and City of Mission Viejo made some sense. And that really came out of a separate meeting when we were having with the City of Mission Viejo about other economic workforce and development activities. And then we realized is that we had some very similar agendas and needs. Additionally, then, we really started looking, how can we make this real? We determined budget needs, really identified, and have at this point have secured multiple funding sources to meet those needs. Really, the goal is revenue development for the sustainment of the program's operations going forward long-term. Okay. On campus, we moved these discussions through collegial consultation with our Senate, with our consultation cabinet, the college leadership team, district leadership team, and really prepared for the final prepared for the final plan for which you've received some of tonight. And so the puzzle really came together, and we realized we needed to put all these different things, learning for manufacturers, with students and entrepreneurship, classrooms, curriculum, collaboration, all these things into one physical entity. And that's when we realized one significant issue. Saddleback College, if you want to get a closet or an office, it's going to be quite an endeavor. We are severely impacted because of lack of space. So in leading us through the next stage, Israel's going to have some talk.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Board Trustees. Our vision is truly to create a multidisciplinary innovation, manufacturing, and entrepreneurial center for the benefit of Saddleback College, the students, the community, the manufacturing industry sector, where each of the service offerings support one another, and create an applied learning opportunity for students in the area of science, technology, engineering, art, and math. The concept is to house the advanced manufacturing program off-campus, to expand our degrees and certificate programs in this program, also have a innovation, a fab lab, Makerspace, also have our business incubator, and an entrepreneurship and innovation learning center, and also gives an opportunity to expand our CTE programs and incubate future CTE programs. And also provide opportunities to expand the college's contract education program and customized training services. The advanced manufacturing program, creative programs, requires additional space for more equipment and classified support to increase FTSs. This program is growing, we'll see a slide on that. There's a number of manufacturing companies out here that need support, but we just need the physical space to have more equipment, to bring in more students. The Makerspace allows students to bring their creative minds to innovate, design, and create in a supervised, supportive environment. This is a trend, Makerspaces throughout the state of California, and throughout the United States, as a matter of fact. It's a big movement for applied learning opportunities for students, so they can innovate and tinker, and really hands-on experience. The business incubator is intended to attract and support the most vibrant talent and promising innovators and entrepreneurs in Orange County. The best of the startups and early-stage companies we incubate will grow into successful South Orange County businesses, generating living wage jobs of tomorrow, and spurring our local economy. The entrepreneurship and learning center will support students' entrepreneurial learning, will help them with business plans, business plans competitions, pitch contests, and help them also with business-run businesses, student startups. Students will learn how to establish, grow, and succeed in new and/or establish small businesses. We have facilities constraints. Our constraints currently do not allow for the advanced manufacturing program for expansion. It's already at full capacity, there, you can't put any more large equipment in there. We can't have multiple CNC machines, or mills, or rolls of 3D printers, it's just there's no space. And there's no other space on campus for that. Industry partners need more skilled workers. I meet with a lot of manufacturing companies out here in, in Orange County, in South Orange County, and they're needing skilled workers. Their current workforce is aging out, and they need new workforce, and they need to be trained and educated and prepared. And they're looking to us to try to solve that issue. And they're looking to other colleges in Orange County to help them solve that issue. Also, we have no other available space to expand other CTE programs, like it could be welding, it could be HVAC, it could be robotics, or whatever. We'll look at industry needs, what is the demand out there for new CTE programs, and, and meet that need. Manufacturing companies are asking for a regional training center. I meet with a lot of companies and say, hey, is there a place I can send my employees to get trained? We don't have a computer lab, okay? We're in operation, we can't stop operations to have our students, our, our employees learn more advanced skills than five-mill access, or seven-axis mills, and, or more CNC machines. There, there's no place. And we're looking for this facility to be that place to meet that need. And the advanced manufacturing program requires a dedicated facility to meet these needs for the programs, for the industry, and for students. And also, there's no available space for entrepreneurship center, or an incubator, and no space to, to create a robust Makerspace. We did some research, we looked at all the manufacturing companies within a 10-mile radius, and a 25-mile radius of the campus. We're looking at this map that's a 10-mile radius. Of all the companies, you see the concentration of companies, small employers from 0 to 28, then up to larger employers from 651 to 1500. And I've been reaching out to many of these companies, and all of them are saying the consistent same thing. We can't find enough skilled workers. We don't have a place to train our incumbent workers. And so the community industry needs, the manufacturing industry sector struggles in finding skilled workers. Manufacturing industry sector needs incumbent workers trained through contract education, or customized training, as we call it. And students across multiple disciplines need access to Makerspace to innovate, create, and gain an applied learning experience. A really good example of this is recently, we partnered with Swift Engineering in San Clemente on this Robotics Hands Project. I'm sure you saw a press release on it, you heard a little bit about it. But this was an opportunity for students in engineering, computer science, business, manufacturing, women, and a diverse group to come in and actually help design, help make, and help assemble. And we're also partnering with our K-12s on this project, it's phenomenal. We're looking at expanding this with sensors through a company, Foot Tech, which we also developed, and delivered customized training to. And we're looking at expanding this to vets as well, who need prosthetics. So it's an amazing project. But this is an example of what we mean by applied learning. So students in the community need an innovation and entrepreneurship center. This is tied to our Economic Workforce Development Plan and Goal III of our strategic plan. The City of Mission Viejo initially approached us with the, to host a business incubator to spur economic growth. And they've also wanted to partner with us and co-locate their Chamber of Commerce and their foundation at this facility. And ultimately, the college needs to increase enrollments and FTSs, and this facility will allow us to do that. We updated a chart on enrollments. We here are listing the FTSs by academic term. You can see there's growth from 1314, from 1415. We, we broke it up from the fall to spring semester, fall's the blue, spring is the orange. And I'll point out that just this fall alone, the FTSs, which is about 17, far exceeds any of the FTSs for the fall, so we still need the spring to come through. So we're looking at approximately 30 FTSs in this program, which has never occurred in the history of this program. So we're definitely growing, and we, and that's based on demand and need of industry. Next steps? Of course, we're asking to move forward with lease negotiations, expedite the completion of the Department of State Architecture Review if necessary, and accept the donated equipment for the Makerspace and Advanced Manufacturing Program from the Patent Group. The Patent Group, we had a meeting, we shared a very more detailed presentation, they loved it. They committed to donate all the equipment that we need to expand our advanced manufacturing program, and, and provide the equipment that we need for our Makerspace. That's phenomenal commitment. And next week, our planning next step is expand and diversify our instructional program offerings through development of industry-recognized curriculum and credentials. We have a brief rendering of what this facility can be laid out in terms of locating the entrepreneurship center and business incubator close together, and there's open coworking space, a couple classroom labs, and a classroom, and certainly co-locating the Makerspace with manufacturing. And there's more detailed renderings that we have this, but this is just kind of a brief overview of what it could look like. The city brought forth a recommendation to meet our needs. It's here in Mission Viejo, and it's located on Geronimo Road, not too far from here. It's about seven miles, I think, right? Approximately? And it's a great facility, and there's room for expansion. We're looking at initially about 17,000 square feet. We can expand to an additional 30,000 square feet in the same facility. Timeline, do you want to take over this one?
Sure. Very quickly, of course. This really did start right after Israel and I were brought on board with ideation. And through that summer, we started doing programmatic concept and planning, we did a draft plan. So this, I just want to share with you, has been an ongoing research effort since, really, we started, both Israel and I started on the same day, back in May of 15. And we've been moving this forward pretty steadily, and starting this last summer, in July of 16, we really started looking at the development of partners and potential partners. The foundation became involved, different employer partners. And then in this summer, we really started looking at potential facility location. We're hopeful, we've started the process with internal facilities to prepare for a DSA look, if there is one required. And we were hoping that once the lease is approved, or if we go into negotiations and we can get a lease approved, then building modifications. In January, we really could start the launch operations of the Entrepreneurship Learning Center and Business Incubator, as we develop the rest of the space. And then by spring through summer, we actually could be looking at moving the academic programs and starting the full Makerspace fabrication labs. Part of the facility that we're currently hoping works out, as negotiations go forward, would allow for that immediacy, because the, the building is really ready for the business incubator, the entrepreneurship center, based on the existing layout of the, of the facility. So what Israel and I both would like to say is, this type of innovation entrepreneurship center really is economic workforce and development at its core. It really is bringing in the academic programs, industry partners, civic organizations, a variety of opportunities for students, from internships to the pre-apprenticeship models that we've been hearing about, through actually training the incumbent workforce, and even more importantly, getting access to those incumbent workers who are so trained, so we can actually build up our employer ranks. The majority of our advanced manufacturing courses are actually taught by people from the industry, working as part-time faculty, and we're going to need to continue to rely on their expertise as we add more and more programs, till we can get in a position to add more full-time faculty. So at this time, Carol will talk.
Thank you. So really quick, we've identified the need, it's a very exciting project. We need to grow in our FTES and programs. And so we've worked, and reworked this budget several times, I've worked closely with John and Israel. And at this point, the budget is self-funded via grants, and, you know, contract revenue, various sources of revenue. And we have budgeted their income pretty conservatively at this point in time, and been a little more liberal on our expenditures with regard to that. And you'll see, we've put in costs such as IT support from the college, and accounting support from the college, which we're, we're building in a lot of our self-funded budgets at Saddleback. And so this, this concept has been presented throughout the college to various groups. I think Israel's made over 20 presentations, and our Consultation Council, which is our shared governance group, is fully supportive of this concept and the budget, et cetera. But of course, as we work through the lease, if this is approved, that obviously the devil's in the details too, and we'll have to continue to monitor and assess, because like any budget, the minute it's, the minute it's on paper, we have to keep assessing it and, and keep it alive. So that is it in a nutshell with the budget. Any questions?
All right. Well, thank you all very much for the presentation, and I will now turn it over to Trustee Wright to ask the first question.
Where are your funds coming from, and about, how much are you talking about as far as funding? In hundreds of thousands, millions, or what?
Yes, it's included in your business plan. It's towards the back in the business plan, but I'll just kind of summarize it.
Okay.
The Innovation Entrepreneurship Center is structured to generate income from contract education, from the early-stage companies that we incubate, they will pay a monthly fee rent, okay, to be located there, in, in exchange to receive mentorship and expertise from a number of experts to help them grow. We'll have seminars and workshops. There's strong workforce dollars, funding that we're, have, are requesting at the regional level, of $750,000 for two years, each year. And also, there'll be strong workforce local dollars that we'll be applying for as well. And then the combination of those revenues, and also with the additional FTES generation, even though I know it goes to the college and to the district, but we're showing in the business plan that we will be contributing and generating FTSs and income in, in that way. The budget's broken out, and a couple ways to help you see that. But that summarizes it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, so I was interested in understanding the, the business plan a little bit better, and Carol, please feel free to chime in here as well. So I saw the fact that you had the two grants that you just described, and how, those are things that would need to be applied for, and we would be, and would need to be approved, is that correct? Those aren't things that are necessarily in the bag?
That's correct. The local share of strong workforce is more highly probable of securing. The regional share, we've done two presentations already at the South Orange County Economic, excuse me, at this LA Orange County Regional Consortium. The presentations, the most recent one was certainly more well-received, because we put a, a regional focus on collaborating with other colleges, on addressing the needs of the county, the entire county in apprenticeships, and growing the industry sector in manufacturing, and also increasing FTSs at all the colleges that have some form of manufacturing program. Because as we're doing outreach and marketing to manufacturing companies out in the area in, in Orange County, we can refer the students to the closest college that benefits those students. So collectively, regionally, we're looking at increasing completion rates, we're looking at increasing certificates and completions, and overall, increasing FTSs in this industry sector in this program.
I, I guess the part that concerns me is that without the grant, you know, that initial grant funding in the first two years, and subsequent grant funding in subsequent years, we're talking about fairly significant expenses that would be borne by the college in supporting these programs.
Let me address that really quick.
Yep.
The, the expenses that are listed there are really aggressive, and those are correlated to the amount of program income. Certain expenses can be cut back as, let's say, certain income doesn't materialize. But we've also been very conservative in the amount of FTSs that we're projecting.
And just a reminder, strong workforce is actually not a grant, it is a categorical funding source that is continuing on. There's a local share, Saddleback College has about $1.7 million, and that is an annual, it, it keeps repeating each year. We've allocated the funding from year one, we have not yet allocated the funding year two, and funding year three actually starts in July. So there, that is actually the money that we control at the collegial discussion level, but here at the college. And if you look at, at the way the business plan is running...
What is, and what is that funding going to support now?
Currently, it funds several different activities. There's some activities in healthcare, there's two different individual activities. It is going to be doing another project that you'll probably be hearing about a little later, which is the Student and Alumni Professional Development Institute, which is really a house for future placement activities for Saddleback College. It also is funding the dual enrollment, dual pathways dean position, an assistant dean to oversee CTE across the campus. So it's funding a music and a CVTR program also.
Would, would that funding then be eliminated from those programs and redirected to these programs, or how does that work?
Not all of those programs have ongoing funding. Most of it is, or not most of it, but a significant part of it is equipment. Equipment's a one-time funding with those workforce dollars. So the $1.7 million, approximately $800,000 is available in year two, which has not yet been allocated. Some of the money is ongoing, and there is plans, even with several of the positions that it's funding, for those to be offloaded as FTS and other things develop. But that's just one of the funding sources. The incubator itself will generate funding, and, and some of the other activities as well. Contracted, we already have revenue stream for. So those are all, many of the services that we're looking at, if we were to acquire the regional funding, it wouldn't just go to the base operation, it would allow us to enhance the services and enhance what we're doing. So some of those fundings are really dependent upon, we need extra money to do eight more things, but not necessarily the primary things that we're looking at, the fab, the Makerspace, the Entrepreneurship Center, and the academic program.
Yeah, ju, just as a, a general observation, I love the concept. I think that this is, you know, exactly the kinds of things that we ought to be doing. And so from that standpoint, I'm very supportive of, of your efforts. And certainly would love to be able to work in concert with the City of Mission Viejo in order to make something like this happen. The concern I have right now is really understanding this a little bit better, and I think that's what this presentation tonight really... And I think that's what this presentation tonight really will help us do. But I think, you know, my own perspective is, is I need to study this thing a little bit more and have a little bit more time for it before I can really, you know, give my seal of approval to make certain that I understand what the dynamics of the program are. And I think you're, this is helping, the dialogue, some of the questions that you're answering. You know, for example, another question that I have is, is, well, you know, the rent is pretty hefty here, and frankly, I wasn't real impressed with the level of offset, if you will, from City of Mission Viejo on that. So that's one thing that I would certainly want to, want to have future discussions about. I want to understand the personnel costs a little bit more. I noticed that you've got, it looks like, two funded positions in this business model, aside from the program coordinator, or the adjunct faculty position that you've indicated on the college side of the equation. So I need to understand how that would work a little bit more. I think I need to understand how the FTEs, you know, would be generated, and would we in fact be compensated for that FTEs? Or is it just transfer for basic aid? So lots of, lots of questions, and appreciate the information.
Appreciate the opportunity to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. Very good questions. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I had one question about the chart here. Just see if you have any insight as to why maybe some of the numbers changed. I mean, you had a dip in 1617 in the fall, and for that intensive purposes in the spring as well. And then this rise, and it, again, 17 FTEs isn't a whole lot, but it is, I mean, we certainly want to serve as many people as we can, so it's not insignificant. But it's just kind of wondering what, why all of a sudden this jump, and then, you know, will it go back down again like it did in 1617?
I'd like to actually have Glenn answer that question, if you don't mind. And I think he's got the closest view.
Glenn Stevenson. I am the Department Chair for Advanced Manufacturing. I think you can start with that we have Career Pathways Grant had come in and helped to develop some of the equipment, some of the program. The program's been around a long time. The program's been around since we had the National Science Foundation Grant way back 2008. So the curriculum has been there. It really hadn't been revisited or looked at until I came about. This is my sixth year here. But I've, we've taken the Career Pathways Grant money and developed and got equipment. And I also have rewritten, completely rewritten the program with new curriculum and updated. And so that, that was kind of the initial coming back. But support has come in, timing with CTE programs, with funding coming down from the state, with the industry in the area picking up, you know, the jobs and everything is getting better. Then huge support with some of the, the funding that the gentleman behind me have in bringing on people to help with outreach, going to the different schools in the area, going to career nights and so forth, and going, meeting with the industry. And then we've been doing the contract education, so we've connected with the industry in the area. And, you know, just as an example, we had FoodTech in. I gave them a GDNT training. Out of that, we've got four or five students who just took on and came in and took full-on classes outside of that contract ed. So all of that has brought and expanded the FTEs or the number of students in the program.
Just as an FYI, the fun, the usual pattern for growing CT programs that have, that are in place is build a pathway from, or from a feeder school, from the K-12s. And we've been trying to connect up with the K-12 pre-engineering pathways and activities like that. Build industry collaborations, awareness through industry, build relationships with industry so they value the program, and then ensure that you have the latest and greatest equipment. We've had several significant equipment donations. We had a pre-apprenticeship grant that helped fund purchasing some of the latest equipment that is in the lab. And we actually have more equipment ready to come to us as soon as we have room to place the equipment.
Okay. And then I had another question about kind of time constraints. And this is going to be pretty loaded and may be difficult to answer just tonight.
Carol answer it.
Like, what is your projected, like, hopeful opening date? What is your time constraints with, say, the donation? Time constraints with the workforce partnership money that you're going to be applying for? The other money? Like, how, I mean, we don't like being pigeonholed or backed into a corner. Like, if you don't pass this tonight, we lose it all. But at the same time, we, I mean, this is, this is big.
It is big.
And I think you really do understand that we support this. This is something we're really excited about. But we also don't want to rush. And so I just kind of want to get a sense of what our legitimate time constraints may be.
Well, be really realistic and brutally honest, because you deserve that. If we were to enter into a lease, and let's say, this fall, we could realistically start our Entrepreneurship Center in January. Because the section of the building requires minimal tenant improvements. It's already set up with office space. Maybe just clean the carpet or replace it. The owner of the building, Saunders Property, is willing to invest in the tenant improvements for this facility. Mr. Saunders wants us there. He wants this project as well. We have letters of written commitment of support. And then that takes us into the spring. We could start identifying early-stage companies, which I've already done a lot of research on, to start placing some early-stage companies in these offices to start incubating. Okay? So realistically, the spring is something that's very realistic. Now, the tenant improvements for the manufacturing program are more considerable, and same thing for the Makerspace. That could be accomplished around the summertime with equipment from the manufacturing company going over during the summer, and we could start by fall of 2018. That's a timeframe that we could target. At the same time, Glenn Stevenson and I, we did a presentation before the Patent Group. And the ask was, after we did the presentation, that they would be the lead sponsor and owner of equipment to outfit this entire facility. And they said yes, because they see it, they believe in it. And then in their words, oh, by the way, the Patent Group provides manufacturing equipment to all the colleges and Makerspaces throughout California and throughout the United States. And in their words, they said, there's no facility anywhere in California or in the United States that's like this. There's Makerspaces, there's tech centers at colleges, there's some manufacturing programs, but no college or district that has the vision to integrate this and put it all together to actually make it sustainable. Okay? That's in their assessment. And they also made the point that they can also identify other manufacturers of the equipment to also come onboard as sponsors of the facility. And we didn't ask them to do that. This is something that they're offering. Still too premature, but we're also having some discussions with our foundation. There's a possible donor that might be interested in this. So we provided some summary information, and we'll start having some dialogue. The foundation for City of Mission Viejo will also be instrumental in helping identify other funding sources should we need them. So that's kind of the timeframe, to answer your question realistically. And like all projects, there has to be some flexibility. There's things that happen, and we adjust.
Some of the constraints really revolve around the academic calendar, of course. There are certain times when we can move an academic program and when we can't. So obviously, summer isn't ideal. Winter becomes much less ideal, given the small timeframe. So we do look at the formalization of the lease and the beginning of the building modification to have certain timelines. If it were pushed a little bit farther, say, into the spring, and we couldn't make the move in the summer, it would require then a very complicated move in the winter break, or even possibly another delay for another year. So that's really the only necessarily time constraint. We don't anticipate a competitor coming in for this spot. We do look to see if there are other spots available as a fallback. We always kind of try and have a Plan B. But that's really where the timelines and the, any impact could be. It just shifts the timeline depending on the, based on the academic year. We're already starting discussion about our fall schedule. So summer schedule is due in just about a month. So we're, that really is the timeline for the academic program.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
I think Israel answered one of my questions because I wanted to know who really is going to own the equipment, especially the heavy equipment. And you said, the, when I hear a sponsor, I sort of think they give it to you.
Well, there's some that would be given. There's others that it might be a house at this location to showcase it. Like, here's the latest, greatest technology. We showcase it, we use it. It could be swapped out for the next version of the latest and greatest. There's some older equipment that we don't have that we could use that could be given to us. But there's also other partners. George Fisher is a company that we're partnering with on, that, we're partnering with to deliver some customized training. But they have volunteered to donate some equipment in plastics manufacturing for us to teach this new technology to our students. There's Applied Medical out here in Rancho Santa Margarita, who wants us to start teaching plastics extrusion. So that's another piece of equipment that I'll be getting. And we've already ordered some of this equipment also. So there's a lot of companies that are interested in partnering with us that'll help support this. And as Glenn and I have spoken, build it and they will come. We've heard that with other concepts related to AATIP as well. So anyways, hopefully that answers the question.
Israel, do you have partnership agreements in writing with all these people? When they say they want to and what they do are two different things.
Well, we have, mostly these companies, or all these companies, we have delivered customized training, contract ed. And for that purpose, we have agreements when we deliver training. We have a formalized agreement with George Fisher for a formalized internship program, which is very much like an apprenticeship program, actually, but without the red tape. So as we move down this continuum, we can have, you know, concrete agreements if necessary. I mentioned, we have letters of support from Swift Engineering also, from the City of Mission Viejo, Saunders Corporation, the owner of the building. So there's commitment there, there's support. And I think Carol has a comment she wants to make.
I understand the concern about the price tag on the lease. I get that. And of course, we haven't entered into negotiations yet. However, you know, if you were to think if we were to build a building on campus, this is 17,000 square feet, it's a lot of space. And the, you know, the tens of millions that we would need for that. And a lot of this support that we've built into this budget would naturally be on campus, like the IT support, the accounting support. We would, you know, so I think we've really held them to the fire on this budget by putting all these costs in there. But, you know, we've not, we'll have no utilities, we won't have the custodial, the scheduled maintenance, all of those things. So for 17,000 square foot face, a space which would, to build that on campus and maintain that on campus would be significantly more expensive.
I agree with that. And it's just when I'm looking at the square footage here, I'm a square footage girl. And if you look, here's the classrooms, and I just don't, obviously, this is not for the heavy equipment, because that's not a lot of space for heavy equipment.
Not in the classroom space, no.
Okay. No, I'm talking about where you're going to put it, the warehouse, because none of these, these classrooms can hold the heavy equipment, or are they?
They're a little bigger than, than probably they look in that particular diagram, 17,000 square feet.
Well, I'm thinking of 70,000. I mean, I can imagine 17,000 square feet.
Yeah, the Makerspaces will fit. Glenn and our architecture team actually looked at the types of equipment. And in other diagrams that we have, we have much more detail of those rooms.
Okay. And I didn't go line by line, it's a lot, in the expenses, but for the renovation, because the other 30,000 square feet, is that in here?
That is not in there. The other 30,000 square feet is available, and that would just be if we have other needs, if we're ramping up other CTE programs and other needs. It's not part of the initial proposal or what we're going to negotiate in a lease.
Okay.
Thank you. Very good questions by, by my fellow trustees. I had a, I'll ask you a couple of questions, and I'm going to submit the rest in writing. There are too many in the interest of time. I think I'll do that. But I just want to say that promoting this kind of project is actually one of the reasons why I ran for this seat, is to see something like this happen at Saddleback College and, or at IVC. So you're not going to get anyone more supportive of doing something like this than myself. I did have a few questions. Israel, how many, how many manufacturers have you spoken to? You said you've been doing some outreach.
I don't know the exact number, but I spent my time here, I'm almost two and a half years here. And I spend the majority of my time out driving around. I schedule appointments, and I met with them all over the region. If I were to say a number, I'm looking at probably around 45, 50 companies that I've actually met with and discussed what their workforce needs are. When I meet with a company, it's really intent of what do they need in their workforce? Do they need incumbent worker training, which means contracted? Are there opportunities for formal apprenticeships or internships for our students? Okay? Is there an opportunity for them to send their current workforce and take classes at our program? Okay? Also, we build relationships and over time, identify some of these companies that could be possible donors to our foundation. For example, we have the gala recently. And one of the companies that I've been partnering with, which is FoodTech Advanced Sensors Technologies, they were invited to attend the gala, and they ended up donating about $15,000 over the course of the evening. Okay? Just recently, I met with a different type of company, which is American Honda Corporation. And they oversee a lot of the, well, the Hondas throughout the United States, the dealerships. And here in Irvine, we have Norm Reeves Honda. We partner with them to help sponsor, be the title sponsor of our Vets Fair. And they sponsored the program donated by another $15,000. So this outreach to these companies is working, and it's helping boost some of the enrollments in this program. We're also, I also meet with completely different industry sector, retail, hospitality, and tourism, specifically the hotels and the resorts. Those relationships with those resorts are building relationships with our culinary arts program and hospitality. It's creating opportunities for our students, for employment, for internships, for placements, and support for our program as well. So it's, that's one of the things I love about my job. It's fascinating to meet with these companies, to learn their needs, to take tours of their manufacturing. It's phenomenal, it's phenomenal. It's, the technology's out there. And what we're trying to do, bring back the feedback to Glenn, Glenn has a lot of these companies on his advisory committee, they're telling us what their needs are in terms of technology. All these companies are different, but they have some common things in terms of technology. And our advanced managed manufacturing program is broad enough to meet the needs of a lot of broad employers. These employers aren't hiring, you know, thousands or hundreds of employees every year. They're hiring the five, the 10, the one, or the two annually, depending on the size. And so, and there's hundreds of these companies all over. And so we, we're, the intent of the program is to scale it, to be able to meet, stay with the demand and meet the demand and scale it as needs dictate and as the industry expects.
I get it, I get it. So let me just ask, let me, more questions. You know, I've had the pleasure of actually myself in my private life visiting entrepreneurship centers, Makerspaces, incubation centers, accelerator programs, workplace training programs. And it seems to me, you're trying to do all of this. And so what I was a little, what I'm, I want this to succeed. But, I mean, you talked about entrepreneurship, which is very different from incubation, which is different from acceleration, which is different from a Makerspace, which is different from training.
Correct.
So where are the priorities in, in terms of where, where, where should be, we should be going? Are you saying we should do all of these concurrently? Or are some of them we should focus on to benefit FTEs?
That's a fabulous question, and I'm glad you asked it. You're like my, my ringer. Thank you. I ran an entrepreneurship center very successfully at Questa College. It formerly was an SBDC. And we had an opportunity to create the model called the Business Entrepreneurship Center that became the model for entrepreneurship in all the state of California, funded by the state of California through the Community College Chancellor's Office. So I understand entrepreneurship centers really well. And I also know incubators well. I helped Cal Poly start their hothouse and start their incubator. I've studied all the incubators throughout the United States, the best practices, the ones in California, the ones here in Orange County. And many of them are not successful. They struggle. And they struggle for funding, and sponsors, and donors, and they fail. So that's, and, and in this case, this model, entrepreneurship will focus primarily helping students, incubators, early-stage companies. There's a separation. Okay? Okay, a Maker Space, that's different. Correct. A Maker Space allows students from different programs across the campus and faculty to be involved and innovate and integrate. Well, I'm working with George Eden. He can give you some examples of what we're doing in terms of a Maker Space movement. You can talk to Scott Fredrickson about some of the things that we have with entrepreneurship. And so, we understand that. And we understand manufacturing, a program itself, academic program, and future CTE programs. Yes, they're all vastly different. But the key that makes this value proposition and center unique is that by combining each of these entities, they can actually help one another, support one another, help each other be sustainable. And there's multiple entry and multiple exit points for students. They could come into Maker Space, oh, I really like this. I can go to the entrepreneurship center, learn some things about running a business, go back and tinker. Oh, a student can go from manufacturing and need more time, they can go tinker in the Maker Space and go back into their class and manufacturing. Or they can cross-pollinate, start taking some entrepreneurship classes. So you can see that there's multiple entry and exit points. And also, by having this regional training center, we can address the needs of companies, which will help grow the programs. And this is also, would be a community asset, a regional asset for the community to take advantage of workshops and seminars and entrepreneurship. The community can take advantage of the Maker Space during certain hours for a fee. Okay, it won't be fee, it won't be for free. And so, we've created different ways to generate revenue. I'm a businessman, and I'm applying different ways to operate this from a revenue perspective. So for free is not a business model, it's just not.
One quick thing I'd like to add. We talked several different times about scalability. What's unique about this operation is there are many activities we can do at a certain level before we require additional staff, additional activities. Most of the models that you spoke about, the incubators, the separate entrepreneurship centers, the accelerators.
Wait, I'm just going, you guys, I mean, you want to do the entrepreneurship center, incubation, Maker Space, and training, right? Are those the four pillars?
Correct, and we're doing those in some form now.
That's not part of it.
Not the accelerator, we're the business incubator. So this particular area, but what, what you see is one of the flaws that most of those separate entities do, they add a tremendous staff load right up at the start. And that's usually what sinks them, is their own staffing cost.
So speaking of that, I'll do my, thank you. In the interest of time, just one more question, is that on staffing and resources, Israel, you and John, you're busy. We're trying to develop ATEP, a couple decades into it. How do you factor that, the board priority and the district's priority and the college's priority to develop a viable workforce development campus in Tustin at ATEP while at the same time moving forward with this entrepreneurship center?
I'll answer concisely for the time. Some, a model like this can be anywhere if a college can do it. It could be at ATEP, but you've got to find a prototype and develop the model. First and foremost, Tustin is not Saddleback College's service area, first. Secondly, the City of Mission Viejo approached us here in Mission Viejo to have an incubator. So we studied on how we can actually make that viable. Third, our students, it would be kind of challenging to travel to Tustin to take advanced manufacturing class and then travel back here to take additional classes. Okay, so there's some logistical type of issues that inherent. While I think having something at ATEP is good, what we have now is a building that's available to us. We don't have to build it, we can just lease it. Saddleback College does not have a building there at this point. So those are some reasons.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And I thank you for being here from the city. Say hi to my friend, Mayor Bucknam. We'll try to get this worked out in a way that makes sense. And thank you all for your extensive presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much. I do have one more question.
Yeah, so I think what I need to do is, do you want to add something?
Well, I think you're about to address it, like, what are the next steps here?
So we're gonna, I think what we're gonna, this is not, this is no longer an action item. So we're gonna move, I will accept a motion to suspend.
It was never a motion to change it from an action item, you just moved it forward.
Yeah, so I need a motion to change it to a discussion item.
I'll move to table this item for tonight.
Table, all right.
I already put in for a motion. And the correct terminology is to suspend it to the next meeting. So I'm making a motion to suspend, with specific time being to the next meeting so that we get more information and more, you know, time to ruminate on it.
Okay.
Parliamentary inquiry.
The question about that motion would be suspending it to the next meeting. Are we in fact going to be ready to bring this back at the next meeting?
Well, I think your mo, is your motion just to suspend it as an action item or suspend it at this point as a discussion or not clarified yet?
Suspend it as an action item. I mean, it's already on the agenda as an action item. So we either have to make a motion to pass it or a motion to fail it. Or a motion to suspend it.
I think we can move it to a discussion item.
Once it's been agendized, you can't. You can move it forward in the agenda, but you can't change it from an action item to a discussion item unless it was put out as that Thursday. So I'm suspending it, and if next meeting isn't long enough, if we need more time, I can amend the motion to.
Yeah, friendly amendment to suspend action on the item until such time as we decide to bring it back up.
No, you have to, you have to move it to a specific time. That's the Roberts rules. You can't just leave it in the wind.
Okay, so that's the motion.
I know I'm right. So is the October meeting long enough? I know it's, it's been, it's on the agenda to be moved to October 30th, which is more than a month.
Well, I think we can put it on the agenda, I mean, let's vote on it. There's been, you have a motion, it looks like there's a second. And like, I think there's a lot of work to do in the next month, and hopefully it's ready.
And I think it's important that you guys know, again, full support for the idea and the concept. We really want to get this going, but we want to do it right. We don't want to rush into it, we don't want to feel like we're put in a corner. I think there's a number of written questions that are going to go to Danny. And to, and to Chancellor Fitzsimmons, to then bring to you guys, to let you know what some of those concerns are and address those and have it ready for that. I mean, I don't think we're going to need another presentation. We'll just have more information in the item.
I think my motion to table was probably more appropriate.
Yeah, I think it might have been, I'm looking. Yeah, I think the tabling motion may have been more correct. And your motion is to suspend action, TJ. But why wouldn't we move to postpone the motion? To postpone the action, the, I guess that's what you're doing.
I am motioning to postpone.
Postpone it.
That's what I meant. Did I say suspend?
You did, that's what confused me.
I'm sorry, I meant postpone.
Okay.
That's why I had to have a specific timeline.
Okay, I don't think my motion to table does have a specific timeline.
No.
Which, which is why I like it.
Well, but then I asked him.
When we're ready to come back.
I think he's, yeah, I mean, my understanding is when you table a motion, then you remove it from consideration, and it doesn't mean that it's tabled permanently.
Well, it has to be, it has to be.
It would have to be re-agendized.
Removed from the table.
Right, so I think.
You have to make a motion and remove it from the table later.
I think what Trustee Lang is saying, I mean, is concern that we're boxed into taking action on it next month when I think we want to, but there might, it may not happen.
And we could suspend it again.
Yeah, you can just postpone it again.
That's a little, I don't know if, I, so.
Again, I was listening to their time constraints.
Correct.
About the, so if we let it go too far, then it could kill the deal. I think, I think more than a month, it's a month and a week. The, a lot of the concerns we have were addressed tonight, but there are some written questions. And I think a month is a reasonable amount of time.
The docket, the docket date is October 12th. So it's not a month and a date, it's actually, what, two weeks, so.
Okay, Israel, let me ask you a question.
The November meeting, then.
I mean, kill the, you just said kill the deal. I mean, I certainly hope that's not the case. I mean, if that's the case, then if we have to act in two weeks, and if we don't, it kills the deal. Right, that, there's something wrong with that scenario. So what, I mean, that's not, that's not going to be the case. We're all highly supportive of this. So that can't be accurate, that the deal is killed if we don't approve the action item at the next board meeting.
I've been put on very tight timelines here, not in this meeting or this, but just in general, in my job. And I've been able to deliver. And I have a great team I work with, John Harmio, Carol Hilton, the faculty. We could turn it around, answer questions in detail within the next two weeks.
Just as a reminder, what we had asked for in this was to enter into negotiations. So that does not obligate the district beyond the entering into negotiation. So what we've asked is for the district to have, for the chancellor to have the permission to enter into negotiations for this particular space. There would still require additional action items before we move forward, before we accepted the lease, before we did the movement, before we initiated all those other activities. So again, what we were asking for this evening was just to begin the conversation with the land, with the owner, property owner, so that we could begin negotiation for a lease.
Yeah, that, I, that makes sense, but that's not what the agenda says. The agenda says approved development of a Saddleback College Innovation Entrepreneur Center.
I apologize then.
So, so that's the concern. We're, we, we're interested in doing that, but not tonight.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Trustee Lang, do you want to say something?
Yes, I'll be unfortunately in the position of not being able to support the motion as it stands right now.
So you'd want it to be tabled instead of postponed?
Correct. And I think we could still bring it back in a reasonable period of time and allow the chancellor to really pull this thing together.
May I suggest, may I suggest? The group indicated that they can address these questions in the next two weeks so that it can get on docket. It can't get on docket unless the chancellor concurs that this, the questions have been answered sufficiently well enough to meet your concerns. And I think we should, I would like to advise that they be given the opportunity to answer the questions to a degree that is acceptable within the next two weeks. And if we can't, we don't bring it forward for docket for the October meeting. We bring it, if we can't bring it.
Well, then it would have to be tabled.
And Trustee Lang is correct. And Trustee Lang is correct.
The other option is to change the wording of the motion. So that it just authorizes negotiation, but not approving the development.
Well, you want to do both.
I agree, but I'm saying that's another option.
It would be awkward to approve negotiations without approving the concept.
Negotiation, we've already been discussing with the owner. I mean, I have a proposal ready to go. So that could be done quickly. When we get to the stage, it's sort of like that. So it's more of the centerpiece that needs to be, I mean, I can go quickly on the lease piece now that we have pricing.
In order, for the sake of time, I think we could also propose that if we have even more questions, we can have a special meeting. I know we don't like to do that, no. But I'm sorry, I believe that this is of great importance, this is huge, and.
Yeah, I mean, this is so important, we want it to, all of us want it to succeed. I can honestly say that now, hearing this conversation. And I think it may be a month or two down the road, but maybe it's only a month. But I think into that scenario, it seems to make sense for what Trustee Lang is saying.
I will make the motion to table this item.
We have a motion to table the item from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Witt. Any additional discussion? All right. Let's go ahead and vote on the item.
Now, it says motion to approve, but that's.
The motion to table the item passes by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you all again, we'll get it figured out. It's important to all of us, and we'll talk to you soon.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Jamal, I just need to ask you a question about this. If need be for us to meet, we just have to have a quorum, right? If some of us can't come, but if we need be to, we can.
To come to?
A special meeting.
A special meeting.
Well, if we have, if we have more than, four or more of us, then it has to be an open meeting.
Okay, all right.
So if not, then.
I don't want to lose this project.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're going to lose it. All right. Now, finally, we're on to the consent calendar. Do we have any polls?
5.7 and 5.8.
We're not the water board, we don't get paid for.
I just have a question, I don't want to pull 5.9, but I just have a clarification on 5.9.
Okay, well, why don't you, okay, do you want to?
Do you want me to do it now?
Sure.
On 5.9, when, and really has to do with all the firms that we talk about, but when we bring firms on board, do they have some type of form that they sign that there's no association with anyone here at the college? If firms come in, I don't know what that's called. Yeah, conflict of interest.
Yes, we ran this through a formal request for proposal, our RFP process. It includes numerous attestations that you will comply with various federal criteria and rules and so forth.
And that's part of the federal? Okay.
Okay, so we have a poll, 5.7, 5.8 from Trustee, 5.7 and 5.8 from Trustee Wright. Any other polls? All right, so let's move the remainder of the items. We have a motion from Trustee Wright and a second from Trustee Lang. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Motion passes. Trustee Wright, 5.7.
I had two concerns about this. One was, was this the low bid on this? This is the Irvine Valley College parking lot, Phase A. Was this, was this the low bid?
Excuse me, I didn't hear the last.
The low bid, was this the low, was this the lowest bid, or was it?
You know, I'm normally not involved in the bid process. But we do have someone here that can speak to this, Anna Petrosian, she's coming up to the.
Good evening, my name is Anna Petrosian, I'm the Assistant Director of Facilities for Capital Outlay Projects for Irvine Valley College. Did you hear the first part, I'm sorry. So to answer the question, these are professional services, and those are usually granted by merit, not, they're not the lowest bid.
We got to go into the mic.
We can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Anna Petrosian, with Irvine Valley College Assistant Director of Facilities for Capital Outlay Projects. And to answer your question, that those are professional services, and those are granted by merit, not the lowest bid.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so having some connection to this with the district I work for, we've been working on a solar parking lot since May. And they haven't started construction because apparently there's a backlog on solar panels. Like, what was your hope to get this going? Because again, we're now into September, and they haven't even broken ground in our parking lots, and it was supposed to be done over the summer. So has that concern been addressed at all with the backlog?
You know, I don't think we. You know, I, I don't think we do, and for this reason, is that originally we had the solar panels and the parking lot, the asphalt, if you will, as one project. But with so many people going to solar, Southern California Edison has changed their peak period to a place that doesn't help us that much. So what we've done is separated the two contracts. And so we have the asphalt portion going in first, that will also have the infrastructure for the solar panels. And the reason for the delay is we're able now to include batteries. And so by charging the batteries, then we can run our own peak period and get the maximum savings out of the, out of the panels.
All right. Trustee Witt.
I'm dovetailing what TJ just said. I was, I had a question on page five. You know, is there a cost or is there a situation where they have to pay us or we pay them? If there's a delay in the, in the project? I mean, we start the project and I can see if you can't buy solar panels, then there's a problem. But I just had a question. I actually read this contract and I know it was very interesting.
Yeah, I believe in any case, once a project is started, they would be liable for delays, but I'm not the expert. I think Anna might be able to handle that better.
Could I just step in? This is for design services? This is not for the actual construction?
I understand that, yeah. But if they couldn't get the design going, I mean, there's, well, I've had problems with, with engineers before. So also I have just one more question. I'm looking at finances and on page thirty-nine, it, it gives us the cost of the hourly rate for these engineers. Oh, yes. Engineering service. Is there a restriction to the amount of overtime? Because that's a hefty amount if there is. If there is, that's fine. I just couldn't find it, but. Pardon me?
There's a total cap of a hundred and sixty-six thousand for all the services. And the hourly rate is separate.
As part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
And there should not be overtime for the engineers. We consider professionals under the Fair Labor Standards Act, so they shouldn't have overtime.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item. We did, well, I thought I said it. Well, I guess I didn't. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Prendergast. Motion carries on a seven to zero. Trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We are now on to five point eight. Trustee Wright.
My question on this was, why was there the increase of almost six thousand dollars? What was the increase?
We had encountered excessive moisture in the existing slab. It's an old building and we had no idea how bad it would be because we did the moisture testing in the sister building that's right adjacent to this building and it was fine. So we did not anticipate it and the contractor did not have that in their bid. So when we did the moisture testing, we had to do seven tests and it equated to, we were in excess of the allowance that we allowed for the project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Prendergast. All right. We have motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. A unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. All right.
I'm going to make a motion to extend the meeting to nine thirty.
We have a motion to extend the meeting to nine thirty PM. And a second from trustee Milchiker. Assume there's no discussion.
You're always the one, TJ.
We're just waiting to get it up. There we go. All right, let's go ahead and cast our votes.
Well, I can get in there.
We have unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote to extend the meeting till nine thirty PM. Moving on, let's go on to general action items. And our first item is six point one. We're now at board agenda item six point one. South Orange County Community College District ATEP Grant of Easement Agreement with Southern California Edison Public Hearing. Before we have that public hearing, interim chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons will provide an introduction.
The agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the district to enter into an easement with Southern Cal Edison for utility purposes to maintain underground communication facilities on the ATEP site that will service both the IVC first building and provide future capacity of phase one of the ATEP site. There is one additional board item that relates to this public hearing, item six point two. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing, I'm here to assist.
Does the board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing none. Board item six point one, public hearing on the matter at hand is open. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Six point one is concluded. We will now move to item six point two.
Okay, what you have before you is adopt the resolution number seventeen point twenty-eight, which authorize entering into a grant of easement with Southern Cal Edison over portions of the ATEP property for utility purposes. So this is approval item.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, just real quick, maybe Bob Amici can answer this one. Is this, I know they've been doing a lot of work in the test scenario with black fiber. Is this part of that? Is this what this easement is? Do you know? Are you aware?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to Jeff Dorts about that.
No, what this is, is actually utilities to the properties for their building and for our phase one, which we need to grant for the Cal Edison easement to get onto the property for it.
Because they've been doing that, they've been taking on the black fiber installation and throughout Red Hill and like throughout the whole city for the last six months.
We have no.
I mean, I'm just wondering if that's part of the utilities that are going in.
I could, I could find out if that's part of the project.
Because that would be nice.
We don't have any utilities to the site and that's what this is doing. We had water last, last month and then we also have on the agenda, gas company also.
All right. So we had a motion trustee Lang, second trustee Milchiker to approve item six point two. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We are now at board agenda item six point three. South Orange County Community College District ATEP Grant of Easement Agreement with Southern California Gas Company Public Hearing. Before we have that public hearing, interim chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons will provide an introduction.
This agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the district to enter into easement with Southern California Gas Company for gas utility purposes to maintain underground natural gas facilities on the ATEP site that will service both the IVC first building and provide future capacity for phase one of the ATEP site. There's one additional board item that relates to this public hearing and it's item six point four. And if you have any questions throughout this public hearing, I'm here to assist.
Does the board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Board item six point three, public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Comments are not to exceed five minutes. Think we have any comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Six point three is concluded. We will now move to item six point four. And I will call for a motion and a second on item six point four. We have a motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Let's vote on the item. Six point four is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point five, biennial ethics, biennial ethics training and trustee travel and compensation. They're motion to approve the item.
You skipped six point five.
Oh, my apologies. I did skip. We're on six point five. To reschedule the October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. I have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Wright and a question from trustee Milchiker.
I just want to say that I won't be able to make the meeting because I, we scheduled a previous doctor's appointment in Houston at this time. This is the first meeting in many years that I'm missing a meeting. But I'm going to try to attend the meeting through Skype if I can. Thank you.
Very good. Trustee Jay, go ahead.
I will not be able to attend the meeting. I've had a previous trip. I'll be out on, on a river.
Enjoy. All right. We have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and vote on the item.
I'm going to say no. No.
We have a six to one vote from the trustees to move the meeting and a, a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. Now we're on to six point six, the biennial ethics training and trustee travel and compensation. We have a motion to approve this item. Motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Lang. Any questions on this item? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Motion carries.
I do think it's worth noting that the person who motioned in second and has spent zero, so it's good to be.
That's true. All right. Item six point seven, association of governing boards, John W. Nason Award for Board Leadership. And this is, I think, a determination of the board wishes to submit an application to the AGB for this leadership award. And if two, and if, and if so, approve the nomination for transmittal to AGB. So is this point of clarification, is this a motion for an individual or for the board as an entity? Individual, okay. Do we have any nominations?
Would anybody like it? Would you like to be nominated? It's okay.
I'm good. All right.
I nominate you.
Thank you for doing that. I'm sorry. What's that? I thought I read the item.
The board?
So it is for the, it is for the board as an entity.
Okay, nominate our board.
Yeah, we're wonderful. We have a great board.
Can I add something? So the entry guidelines are, board should submit up to five-page narrative describing a significant role they played in shaping their institution, system or foundation, and should focus on the board's after role and involvement, including the difficult circumstances or significant opportunity that the board faced, the plan the board designs within that climate, the execution of this plan, indicating any additional challenges they rose and assessment of the board's contributions.
Yeah, I did read this item. I mean, it seems a little self-promotional for boards to nominate themselves, but I guess that's the process. Do we want to nominate ourselves?
Well, I nominate the board.
We have a motion from trustee Prendergast. All right.
Yeah, I think, I think we meet a lot of those parameters lately. We've done some really good things and we've met some tough challenges and weathered those storms.
I can't disagree with that.
And I think, I think our board has really done an incredible job. So I really think we deserve to win this award.
I think Terry will do an excellent job writing the five-page narrative.
All right.
It's part of the motion.
Glad there's another Terry in the room.
All right, so we have, have a motion by trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchiker. We will be submitting a nomination and Terry's got her pen ready. And let's go ahead and vote on the item. All right. Unanimous trustee yes vote and even a student advisory yes vote on this one. Thank you. We'll include you in the nomination as well. All right. We are on to six point eight. Saddleback College ATAS Building Project Design Build Criteria and Architectural Services. I think Brandy had a death in the family, so I don't think she's here this evening. We're sorry to hear that.
It is correct.
Jim Rogers is here from Saddleback, if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do we have a motion to approve this item? Motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Jay. Do we have any questions? Looks like we have none, so let's go ahead and vote. A six yes votes. We have one abstention and a student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. Six point nine, Saddleback College ATAS Building Project Design Build Consultant Services. So our motion to move the item. Motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We have a six yes votes, six trustee yes votes, one abstention and a student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. I think we're on to six point one zero. IVC ATEP First Building Name Integrated Design Engineering and Automation Idea. Motion, do we have a motion to approve the building name? Motion from trustee Milchiker, a second from trustee Prendergast and a question from trustee Lang.
Yes, I thought when we had our discussion last month, we had talked about trying to develop some policies and guidelines regarding naming. And here we are again with another name. And I'm not sure is this intended to be in perpetuity? What if somebody, donor came along in the future and wanted to give us a million dollars to rename this? Is that something we'd want to consider? I'm, I guess I'm concerned about getting too far ahead of ourselves here without having any sort of a policy in place.
I'll speak to that and Glenn will, President Rockmore will jump in. We need to have some kind of placard on the building since it's going to be complete in a couple of months. So we do need to call it something. It could be called Building One or it could be called Idea, but it doesn't preclude us from coming forward with a donor-related.
Trustee Lang's question, have we approached any potential donors to have their name embedded in the building?
No, we haven't. We've actually, you know, heeded the, the word particularly from trustee Lang about policy. We've really focused more on having a person's name being something that needed to have policy around it. Their ideologies may change, there's all sorts of things that could happen there. But we followed just the practice of names of every building that we have. So we have the Physical Sciences Building. We have the Life Sciences Building. We have the Liberal Arts Building. And so in this case, it's just identifying the broad set of programs that will occur in the building. And then we're very careful that it's not so restrictive that if some technology ended, that it still couldn't be covered under that name. So things like design, automation, engineering, those things we think will be with us for a very, very long time. But no, we didn't seek a donor. We have had poor luck with that, getting a donor to put, I think we have something in policy about it takes a threshold of money to get your name on a building. There's something out there like that and it's pretty high. I think it's like a million or above for that, as I recall.
Okay, yeah, my real point was that, and if you'll excuse the pun, if a better idea comes along later, we can consider that. But I think the, the answer is, is we just need to revisit the whole policy guidelines issue regarding naming. And I think that it sounds like we ought to do that fairly soon.
Well, right. I mean, we have, we need to revisit the policy guidelines and then when they have instances, instances like this, then we probably should approach some prospective donors for the possibility to have their name attached to it. And if not, we go back to the programmatic formula you used here. Yeah. If I can add also, the, we've spent.
Yeah. If I can add also, the we've spent probably four months working through a name institutionally. We looked at over 100 different possible names, and, excuse me, most of this was led by the faculty and staff out at ATEP, and they made the final recommendation. We reviewed it in front of the Academic Senate and got an endorsement on the name there. So we were very collegial in that process, leading to the name you have before you tonight.
Okay, Trustee Prendergast. Oh, Trustee Lang, did you have other questions?
No, I'm fine. That's fine.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Trustee Lang that we really should work this policy, but I think I think what if I'm hearing it right is we could, if we got a donor, it would be the so-and-so idea building, like it would be the so-and-so Physical Science. So you're just calling it what the programs are that are going to be like ATAS or BISIC and all that. All right, got it.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and vote on the item. I think we're missing a vote. Oh, unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.11, South Orange County Community College District Fixtures, Furniture and Fixtures Applications. We have a motion from Trustee Wright to move the item. Do we have a second? We have a second from Trustee Lang. Do we have a discussion, any discussion or questions on the item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.12, South Orange County Regional Consortium, AB 104 Adult Education Block Grant. Is there a motion to move the item, approve the item? There is. Trustee Jay, a second from Trustee Witt, and a question from Trustee Lang.
Yes, and I'll apologize to the chancellor in advance for not having a chance to talk to you earlier today to ask some questions, but I kind of didn't understand what was happening here, I guess. We were approving a block grant that started July 1 of 2016 and went through June 30 of 2017, which dates have all passed at this point. And I guess when we'll get to the next one, that is at least for a, or ends at a future date, even though that one's already started. So I just, I needed some clarification.
I'll jump, I'll start with Denny jumping in. Basically, we have two items in a row, 6.12 and 6.13, and 6.12 is for the year that has passed. So services were provided. The Adult Education Block Grant was something that came and was new to the district and the colleges, and it took us a while to sort of get our arms around what they wanted to do. They were working with the previous director, Director of Business Services on a template, and it sort of got tabled when he left, and we just, we worked with Estella to get this put in place so we can then have it established for the future year as well. So it is retro.
This is more CYA than anything else.
In a way, it is.
It's what you're telling me.
Yeah, right. You got it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we have motion and a second, and no further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries by seven to zero unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We're now on to 6.13, South Orange County Regional Consortium, AB 104 Adult Education Block Grant. And we have a motion by Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Wright. Do we have any discussion or questions on this item? We do not. Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.14, Board Policy Revision Regarding Transcripts Except for Review and Study. Motion from Trustee Wright and a second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.15, Academic Personnel Actions, Regular Items. We have a motion from Trustee Witt and a second from Trustee Milchiker to approve the item. Any questions? Nope, let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.16, Classified Personal Actions, Regular Items. Motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions on 6.16? Yes, we do. Trustee Lang.
Perhaps I should have brought this up on the previous item as well, but I guess one of the things that we had talked about was being very mindful about the way we were going to replace positions, and now that we have this opportunity with the early retirement incentives, and I just wanted to get some input in terms of how that analysis is going in connection with these approvals.
You want me to take it?
Oh, it's several of us, but go ahead if you want to start.
Well, there is a process that we're putting in place, and right now, there's been much discussion district-wide among the managers to say that we need to prioritize, and so IVC at least has sent me a list, or sent us a list that they they want to have. It includes the retirees, so their vacancies, and the other vacancies that just are a result of normal doing business. And then they've kind of prioritized them. What HR is going to do is going to add at the end of that, we're going to add a column, actually two columns. One column is going to say the steps HR needs to take, because some of those will be, need to be negotiated with the district. If the district considers, you know, reducing it or reducing the hours or anything like that, any kind of a change, there has to be negotiated. Also, if we're not going to meet the 90-day-to-replace language in the CSEA contract, that's something that we need to have a discussion with CSEA, and we have promised them that we will do that. So those steps and one column for HR that will have timelines will end up giving us an entire plan district-wide for all of the positions. It is in play.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Wright.
My question is on page eight of 11. It concerns the reorganization, and it says it wants to take the Director of Community Outreach and Recruitment, and then also a Program Outreach Specialist, and then an Outreach Assistant, and move them to the Dean of Enrollment Services. My question is, we also have an Assistant Dean there who has the same title of Community Outreach and Recruitment. Should he be moved too?
I will be happy to start the conversation on that. The Assistant Dean that is already in there has been assigned directly to Community Education, Adult Ed, K-12 Partnerships. That person will stay with Community Ed because they do a lot of outreach on their own. The operational piece that's institutional for the credit program is being moved back. It started in Enrollment Services, and it's moving back. I will defer to our Vice President of Student Services, Juan Avalos, if he would like to contribute to the comments. This was a college-wide, when I first got here, almost immediately was addressed for, there was too much in one section for the, to maintain all of it in the in the dean's current area.
You're absolutely right. The part that's being focused on is the part that we had in Enrollment Services in our, what we know as General Outreach, that's led by our Director, Leslie Humphries.
Yes.
So it's taking that exact block and just moving it back. A number of years ago, a reorganization happened when this division was originally created. I think the idea was to create a more comprehensive area to work directly with all of our K-12s. These are all very different programs, but they're interconnected, and I think at the time, there's a belief that adding outreach as part of that team would really strengthen the relationships, and I would say that that has occurred. As we've moved on and the need for additional outreach has occurred, both institutionally, different grants that have come in, there's a real need to centralize outreach so that there's one unified voice, and this reorg is really looking to do that, to make sure there's one unified voice, make sure that people are on the same page, that they're trained, and then more importantly, to make sure that the entire conversations from prospect to registrant is all aligned. And Admissions and Records is a key partner in that, and I think with the move, we realized that it was a need really for it to come back.
Okay, I understand it, but I guess what you're telling me is that you've changed the title for that Assistant Dean then, instead of being, because it says on the website that he's the Assistant Dean of Community Outreach and Recruitment. That's what it says on the website.
I'll have to double-check that, that title for you. I'm not aware that that assignment, that that title changed when he was assigned to the Community Ed area, that it was designed specifically for Community Ed outreach, and that the Assistant, I don't believe the title has changed.
Okay, well, that's why, when I looked on your, on the website, it still had that title for him, so that was my question.
All righty. All right, so we have a motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Jay. I don't think we have additional questions, so let's go ahead and vote on the item. I think we're missing a vote. There we go. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. On to 6.17, this is the employment agreement for Dr. Gregory Anderson to become the next President of Saddleback College.
Yes, there is a revision that's not reflected on your copy or the public copy, and that is under 9.5, which is on page four of the agreement. And at the bottom of that paragraph, 9.5, it has been added, "In accordance with board policy, the Academic Senate has issued a minimum qualification determination for academic administrators dated September 19, 2017, which determined Dr. Anderson to be minimally qualified in the disciplines of English and ESL." This is a requirement of the board policy, as it says in the contract itself. We were lucky enough that all of the information came in from Dr. Anderson. The two Academic Senate Presidents got together at the district office, and they are the ones that made this determination, so we were able to slip it in to the agreement at the last minute.
I wouldn't say it quite like that, but yeah.
Slip it. Sorry.
This is a public session. There's no slipping going on. Do you want to say anything, Chancellor, about him as we're about to approve his contract?
Just that we're very excited to have Dr. Anderson start. His official start date is this week, but as you know, he's going to be in and out over the next two weeks, and he'll be physically on campus starting Monday, October 16. So again, we really appreciate all the input that everybody gave to this process, and I think that there was a lot of support for Dr. Anderson, so we're looking forward to working with him and having him be a successful president at Saddleback College.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast. Okay, right on. Any other comments or questions on Dr. Anderson or the agreement? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Trustee Prendergast.
Okay, I'm going to do it this differently this time. I'm going to give Joyce an opportunity to put an item on the docket for 9:45.
Rather than do that, I would say let's try and get through the remaining item and accept the information items in seven.
Okay, but then we still have their reports and like, I don't think you can get it done in nine minutes.
Okay, well, it doesn't mean we have to go to 9:45, so let's, it's just up to.
Then we don't have, okay.
Okay, a motion from Trustee Prendergast and a second from Trustee Milchiker to extend the meeting if necessary to 9:45 PM. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. All right, we're now at 6.18. The Resolution 1730, Classified Employee Position Layoff. Do we have a motion to approve the item? We have a motion from Trustee Wright and a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Our final action item is Saddleback College Innovation. Nope, I'm sorry.
No, I've done that.
We moved that. All right, moving on to reports. 7.1, The Adopted Budget for Fiscal Year 2017, 2018. 7.2, Public Agency Retirement Services Par, Supplemental Retirement Incentive Program. 7.3, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. 7.4, 2018 Teachers of the Year Recognition Ceremony, which I think some of us will be attending. 7.5, Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. 7.6, Facilities Plan Status Report. 7.7, Monthly Financial Status Report. All right, now we're on to reports from Administration and Governance Groups, and we'll start out with Saddleback College Academic Senate, Dan Walsh.
Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity to thank Denise Whitaker for her service as Interim President at Saddleback College. She's a joy to work with and has been instrumental in moving our college forward until Dr. Anderson arrives. She's fair, transport, apparent, and well-liked, and I want to add a genuinely nice person. She will be missed. Thank you very much.
Faculty Association President, Mark Blethyn.
No report.
All right, I like that.
They're going to prove me wrong.
IVC, IVC Academic Senate.
Things are good. We're working hard and trying to take care of one another, so we're okay.
All right. Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, Robert Bruniucci.
As information technology becomes more vital, our service windows to do maintenance are ever shrinking, so I just wanted to call attention that while folks were snuggling their beds Friday and Saturday, we had a team up here working all night long to replace the servers or update the servers for Structured Query Language or SQL, a database software that otherwise, a lot of heavy lifting around here. I want to give a shout out to those folks. Thank you.
Thank you. We're saying a lot of goodbyes tonight, or some sort of goodbyes. Our Interim or Acting Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Diane Claru.
Well, then I'll just say goodbye.
All right.
It's been wonderful. It's been a great district to work for.
Thank you. Glad to have you.
Yeah, I'd like to acknowledge Diane for the wonderful job that she's done in HR.
Here, here.
Very good. Another short timer we have, we've got a lot of short timers here. We're here for the year. Vice Chancellor of Business Services, Jim Bice.
Just very briefly, just say our books were closed. They did it in a superb way. They were recognized by the county for how quickly and well they closed the books, and the county is going to provide a pizza party for them. So, and the auditors are also finishing up, so the fiscal services staff are kind of a bunch of happy campers at this point. Also, our internal auditor, Richard Kudlick, started. Actually, he started on September 21, I believe it was, and he's really jumped right in and is out assessing various areas, talking with different people, getting ready to start putting together an audit program for the, or plan for the year. So that's about it. We may, I guess, have an audit committee meeting on October 26, so Richard will be at that meeting and introduce him more formally. be at that meeting, and we'll introduce him more formally then.
Thank you very much. Now, we have the Office of Chancellor and Trustee Services. I'm just teasing. I was seeing if you're paying attention. All right, IVC Classified Senate. Those were priceless expressions from both of you.
We just have one thing going on. Next Friday, we're having a training on sexual assault and suicide prevention. It's going to be campus-wide, so that's all we have going on.
Thank you. And last but not least, CSEA President Scott Green.
Due to the time constraint that we have, there's no report.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, we actually had 18 minutes. All right, we are now adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.